2015, this is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Today, we're honored to have Reverend Diane Dixon of the Unity Church of Prescott to lead our invocation, and Councilman Blair will lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we ask your blessing on this city. We ask you to guide the women and men of this council to make the hard decisions that keep Prescott a wonderful place to live. Help them look generations down the road so that our children and grandchildren know its beauty. Give the council members the courage and grace to persevere. In the name of the living Christ, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Craig, any announcements for the good of the session? Okay. Today, we have one proclamation and two-
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Kirkendall, I'll go ahead and do roll call.
Oh, you want to do that first? Go right ahead.
Mayor Kirkendall?
Go.
Mayor Protem Kuknia?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
All present.
Mayor, you think she'd know us by now, you know?
Yeah, yeah, since you just look around and...
On the record.
Watch that button over there. Okay. Next week is Constitution Week, and to commemorate that, Councilwoman Wilcox will do a proclamation sitting September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and I think we have some guests here to accept the proclamation. Yes, we do.
Do we have members of the General George Crook Chapter of the Daughters of the American This is a proclamation declaring Constitution Week September 17th through the 23rd, whereas September 17th, 2015 marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Marlande Kirkendall, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th and 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Prescott to be affixed this eighth day of September of the year of our Lord, 2015. Thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you for being here.
I just have a... gave you one of these last year, but you've probably worn it out reading about the Constitution. So I have another one for each of you this year.
We share ours with Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our attorney probably needs one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here to share your afternoon with us. Let's go to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item 1A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on August 25th and September 1st, 2015. B, approval of partial assignment of city contract number 2015-113A1 from C-Mex to Volca Materials Company for the purchase of asphalt concrete on an as-needed basis. Item C, adoption of ordinance number 4951-1489, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public utility easement from the Watson Family Trust, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to accept said easement. Adoption of ordinance number 4952-1490, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of miscellaneous surplus property, including vehicles and equipment, and authorizing the Field and Facility Services Director to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sales. Item E, award of city contract number 2015-208 to Bennett Oil for the purchase and delivery of onsite bulk fuel on an as-needed basis various funds. Item F, approval to purchase vehicle parts and supplies from Napa Auto Parts using State of Arizona Contract Number ADSP 013-039976 pricing on an as-needed basis, city contract number 2016-050 various city funds. And item G, authorization of payment in the amount of $14,379.12 to Stowe's Equipment for repair of a 2004 John Deere tractor, vehicle number 1075 Airport Fund.
Any questions in the council? Craig, I have one on item F. The agreement with... using the state contract with Napa Auto Parts, that expires on January, I believe it's January 31st of 2016. So we're only extending this to that date, and there will be a new contract in all probability.
That's correct, Mayor. This is only for several months to assure that we're... we have the contract in place. When a new contract is entered into by the state, then we'll take a look at that pricing and see if it makes sense.
Which mayor may not be NAPA-
Yes, sir.
-with their new contract. Okay. Do we have a...
Yeah.
Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Motion made in second. Invote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's go to the regular agenda. Item A.
Item 2A, approval of payments to one Yavapai County election in the amount of $72,468, city contract number 2015-015, and two, election operations services in the amount of $33,297.55, city contract number 2015-238, for the 2015 primary election services. Mayor and council, this item is presented for your approval of payment for services that were performed for the August 25th, 2015 primary election. Yavapai County conducted the city's primary election as a vote-by-mail election and charged a fee of $2.75 per registered voter. The services they provided included the mailing of the vote-by-mail ballots, processing the ballots, which includes any testing and tabulation, and then performing the signature verification for each ballot affidavit. The ballots were mailed to 26,352 registered voters for the total cost of $72,468 to be paid to Yavapai County. And then additionally, the city contracted with the elections operations services to provide printing, labeling, and mailing of the post... pre-election postcards, and then the printing of the ballots that were mailed by Yavapai County, and then preparation and printing, labeling, and mailing of the publicity pamphlet. The amount to be paid to election operations services is $33,297.55. So that gives a total amount for the contracted election services of $105,675.55, and that's about a cost of $4.14 per registered voter, or approximately $6.94 per the number of votes cast in the primary election. And with that, I'd answer any questions.
Questions? Over here. Questions or comments from the public? Okay. Council, can we do this with one... one vote? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve payment in the amount of $72,468 to Yavapai County elections and $33,397.55 to the elections operations services for 2015 primary election services.
Second.
Motion made in second. Invote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's go to item B when you're ready.
Item 2B, approval of four agreements for quality assurance and testing services for city capital improvement projects on an as-needed basis, each in an amount not to exceed $50,000 annually. One, city contract number 2016-047 with Nino &amp; Moore. Two, city contract number 2016-048 with Western Technologies Incorporated. Three, city contract number 2016-049 with Engineering and Testing Consultants Incorporated. And four, city contract number 2016-054 with Cardinal.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item before you today is to consider a ward of four separate professional services contracts with four quality assurance and testing firms on a typical capital improvement program and with some of the other departments' needs for various testing of materials that we use in our construction projects or during construction. We need to make sure that the materials provided meet our specifications, so there's a need for having a testing agreement with a firm. We've provided four different firms this cycle to allow us flexibility with our selection of a firm, a selection of a firm by the contractor that's for the project, and also gives us some flexibility if one firm is performing... not as performing as well as we'd like, we have options for other firms. Each contract has a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000 per year. It's not a guaranteed fee. They... all the contractors understand this is an as-needed basis. The funds for these services are already incorporated into our capital improvement program, so there's no additional cost to the various streets, water, sewer funds. And does any questions... oh, the term of the contract is for two years, and it's already built in that we have two one-year extensions on top of that if we mutually agree that they're providing the services that we need. With any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
If you lay the specifications out side by side, they're all over the board.
Oh, you mean as in the costs of each one? Yes.
Yeah, depending on which contractor. So I'm assuming you go through and whatever the need is, you work your way down to the lowest...
Yes.
...the lowest bidder on that particular job.
That is our goal. And also to try to make sure if all the firms are doing adequate, equal work at a fair price, try to make sure not all the firms get...
Yeah. It's truly surprising-
Yeah, it really is.
...of how far.
And some are high on one and low on the other, and at least it gives us some flexibility.
And did I understand you said that the other departments that would need this, Public Works will be reimbursed, or...
I believe that's how it works. That's...
So Public Works doesn't have to pay the bill for the water department, or somebody else?
Well, water is part of Public Works.
Comments from the public? Have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the following agreements for quality assurance and testing services for city capital improvement projects on an as-needed basis, each in an amount not to exceed $50,000 annually. Number one, city contract number 2016-047 with Nino &amp; Moore. Number two, city contract number 2016-048 with Western Technologies Incorporated. Three, city contract number 2016-049 with Engineering Testing and Consultants Incorporated. Number four, city contract number 2016-054 with Cardinal.
Okay.
Second.
Okay on all four?
Yes.
Okay. Did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made in second. Invote please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Steve?
Item 2C, approval to submit a grant application to the Arizona Department of Public Safety Victims of Crime Act in an amount not to exceed $90,000 for a one-year victim advocate position and related equipment and training.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This item is a request for approval to submit an application to the Arizona Department of Public Safety for federal funding from the Victims of Crime Act to fund a victim advocate position for the services here in the Prescott Police Department. The funding will be for one year with the option to renew, and with the influx of new Volca monies that have come into the state of Arizona, we certainly believe that was a real possibility that it would be extended multi-year. The position would be advertised for one year, and applicants that do apply would apply with that understanding that the funding beyond one year is not guaranteed. Be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Counselor?
Yeah. Chief, can you just explain a little bit? We talked about this, but what is the difference between this position and like what TIP does for us?
TIPs provides a general response to a variety of events that occur, including disaster response, fire response. They do have trained volunteers that respond to sexual assault and domestic violence on scene. This advocate position would serve a role that would complement the work in our courts where they assist victims in understanding the trial dates, getting them to courts. They would be the liaison between the officers and the detective to that victim, and not necessarily an on-scene response. So this position would complement the work of TIP, but it would go much more in-depth in the arena of domestic violence and sexual assault victimization.
It just sounds the same, but it's all very worthy. You know, it sounds like it's two different... two different positions, so I'm glad to see this come. I think it's a worthy cause. I'm going to vote yes on this one.
Anyone else?
Well, I have a little bit of a question. If we receive a grant to do this, does that, I don't know, relinquish a little bit of the costs somewhere else within the department? In other words, is... can we use people that we have on staff now, or is this going to be all-new hire? And if it's all-new hire, does the new hire do some of the work we already have somebody on staff doing that we're not getting grant money for?
Mayor and Councilmember Lamerson, this grant does give us the ability, and the timing of the grant application is fortunate, because in the event that we are able to train in-house personnel to slide into this position using these funds to fund that position, that would be a benefit as to us as we look at potential service level reductions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have one question. We currently provide victim-witness services now, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Wilcox, we do provide it on a very limited basis. Michelle Medina functions both as the administrative manager for the command group in the department, as well as a limited victim service specialist, so her time is certainly reserved for those cases that need that service the most, but it is far from adequate in providing full-time advocate services, and we're currently not assisting the prosecutor's office or the courts within court or those type of court proceedings where a victim may want an advocate present with them.
Okay, thanks.
Chief, two questions. One, it looks like this grant could be renewed for one more year?
Mayor, that's correct.
If the stars all lined up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And your 25% match, you'll be able to handle that in kind, so you don't have a cash... negative cash flow?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Currently, the portion of Michelle Medina's salary does, we believe, fits that there, but any time associated from an officer or a detective in direct service to the victim also applies towards that 25% match, so it is more than covered.
Good, thank you. Any comments from the public, questions? Seeing none, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve submission of an application for grant funding for an amount not to exceed $90,000 through the Arizona Department of Public Safety Victims of Crime Act to support a victim advocate position.
Second.
Motion made in second. Invote please.
Passes unanimously.
Item D, when you're ready then.
Item 2D, authorization for Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated to host the 2015 Yavapai Fair at the Prescott Rodeo Grounds, October 1st through the 4th, 2015.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. In March of this year, we were contacted by Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo about their desire to facilitate hosting the Yavapai Fair at the fairgrounds. So consequently, on March 17th, we met with representatives from Prescott Frontier Days, as well as representatives from the Yavapai Fair Foundation. We instructed them to work through the special event committee, fill out the special event application, and go through that process. So they did. We vetted it through the group twice. Again, just to clarify, the special event committee includes representatives from police, fire, risk management, traffic engineering, solid waste, recreation services, tax and licensing, and a few other departments, just to make sure that there was no bugs hidden in there, things that we couldn't overcome. We identified through the process a couple of things that came to our attention. One, traffic circulation for the size of the event. Two, making sure that the insurance requirements were met, as there's a carnival component to the fair, of course. So we've worked through those. Again, we went through the special event committee twice, met with them, and we've overcome those obstacles. We were able to take the traffic and create some overflow parking. I want to correct on your memo. It says at Prescott High School, we had a conflict there. We do have overflow parking identified out at Pioneer Park, so we have plenty there. I have spoke with the county about using the administrative building for parking there. There's another couple hundred spots, so we feel good about the parking. We've worked our way through the liabilities with the insurance, and so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We also have Verossi and Levi Darby with the Yavapai Fair Foundation here to answer any questions as well.
Good. Counselor?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Joe, you described the Prescott Frontier Days as being the sponsor or the host. Does that mean that they're assuming all the liability for whatever happens at the fair?
Good question, Councilwoman Wilcox. As part of the lease that the city took over from the county in 2007, it says, and I'll just read it here so we can understand what we're talking about here. During the term of this agreement, or any renewal term thereof, Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo shall use the premise exclusively for the Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo, other equestrian events, and such other events or activities as may be authorized by the county at the time announced the city. Subject to the limitations set forth in this agreement and attachments heretofore, it is understood and agreed that all of PFD's uses of the premises and policies governing use of the premise shall conform to all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, ordinance, and regulations. So since this is not an equestrian event, really what we're coming to you today with is to authorize using the Prescott Frontier Days rodeo grounds for an event that is not equestrian-based.
I didn't really get an answer to my question. Does that mean that the host is assuming liability?
Maybe I can address that. The... the risk pool, because it's city-owned property, but we have a tenant in the Frontier Days. So the Frontier Days has provided... they're ongoing insurance, is our normal $1 million, $2 million coverage. The agreement with the fair and the amusement carnival operator is that we need a total of $10 million in, you know, aggregate coverage. So you have the fair, which is $1 million, $2 million. The amusement operator, which is a carnival operator, has a $3 million, $4 million, and then the fair is going to provide us with basically up to $5 million aggregate coverage. So we're at the $10 million total coverage, which is required by the risk pool, because if something were to occur at the event, the city would want that level of coverage because we're the owner of the property. So in terms of liability, you know, I think I have to... the agree... the lease with the... with the, you know, has an indemnity provision that Frontier Days will indemnify and hold harmless the county that's been, you know, assigned to the city. So for all events, there is an indemnity provision. At the same time, we have the maximum insurance coverage. We do need some documents still. We still need the fair certificate and endorsement, and we need the endorsement from the amusement operator. We have the certificate here, and so we need those three documents essentially to finalize the insurance. But it is... the amount of insurance and the coverage is acceptable to the risk pool, so they signed off on it.
Okay, thanks.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you, and Gene, thanks for asking those specific insurance questions. I know that was an issue we had to overcome. My comments just are more along the lines of, number one, thank you to Prescott Frontier Days and the Fair Association or Fair Group for bringing this back to Prescott. Joe, thank you and your staff for figuring out how to make this happen. It's nice to see the county fair back where it belongs.
Yeah, along those same lines of, thanks for getting this going, you guys. It's nice to see it was kind of a grassroots effort to bring it back, and I've been going to the fair since '78, and I think when it left Prescott, it... you saw the exhibits start shrinking and shrinking, and it changed from a fair to a carnival. And while a carnival is a very important part of it, I think you guys are bringing the spirit of the fair back, where hopefully we'll start seeing more of that, where it's really a showcase of the community, more than just a good time with flashing lights. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? Just a comment. Councilman Lamerson frequently reminds us that Prescott is the county seat of Yavapai County, and that normally county fairs are held at the county seat of the county. So we also agree. Thanks for... who's here to represent the fair? Would you like to come down and tell us a little bit about the hurdles you've gone through, and... but we're very happy to have you back.
It is actually... what he said is, the carnival is probably the least of our concentration, and we've tucked it off in a corner. If you look at the map, I've tried to hide it as much as I can. My kids don't agree with that concept, but that's okay. We... the biggest focus that we had was to bringing what is really about the county. The county is not about a carnival and a little bit of small amount of exhibits. It's about a lot of crafts and hobbies in this county. It's about ranching. It's about equine, and it's about the entire agriculture division. And that was our main concentration, was to bring that whole focus there. We have events in the arena every single night and all day long that are included when they come in the fair, so they can see glimpses of ranch life to rodeo to barrel racing. We also have combined with our 4H and FFA Expo, so there will be true livestock there. There will be the livestock auction. There is... we're also incorporating with the FFA to bring in their ag mechanics to focus on the phenomenal JTIC program and that program that we have with FFA. So we've tried to encompass a little bit of everything with the county and make it where it's a safe, but yet truly a county fair of where you go to see what's about your county, and I agree that this is the county seat, and this is where it belongs. So...
The... I noticed that you go under the foundation.
Yes.
How are you funded?
We are funded strictly on what we make at the fair, and then there is a governor's fund that comes to us each year. The fair with foundation was losing that governor's fund this year if they didn't turn it into a fair. And with the changes we've made and a lot of pleading and presentations, we have been able to retain that governor's fund.
Good. So the governor's office is acknowledging, yeah?
Yes, the governor's fund does fund us. We get about $40,000 this year for that, and then as the fair turns into more of a fair, and we have more animals and more youth exhibitors and more patrons there, that can go up to as much as 80.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, thanks again.
Thank you.
Hey, good job, you guys. Really.
Yes. And we... yeah. We did give you guys invitations to our opening ceremonies, and we would like to welcome you there, and would like you to... Mayor, if you would honor us to do our ribbon cutting, we would appreciate that.
I'm sure we'll all be there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing it back to the city where it belongs. As the mayor said, not only are we the county seat, but it's in Prescott where it all began on behalf of the state of Arizona. We were the first territorial capital, not someplace down the street, so thank you very much.
Any questions or comments from the public? Thank you, and ready for a motion.
Mayor, move to authorize Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated to host the 2015 Yavapai Fair at Prescott Rodeo Grounds, October 1st through 4th, 2015.
Second.
Motion made in second. Invote please. Okay. Item E.
Mayor Protem. Passes unanimously. Item 2E, fiscal year 2016, general fund budget and mid-year adjustments.
Mayor, if I may-
Mayor, if I may, thank you for the opportunity to present the first of a series of public discussions about mid-year adjustments to the FY16 general fund budget. The purpose of today's presentation is really to provide an opportunity to overview the 2016 general fund budget, as was adopted. And obviously, you're all aware that at the August 25 election, there were a number of ballot measures on the ballot. And as a result of the election results, two of those measures passed. The general plan was ratified by the voters, and the streets tax will remain at 1% strictly for streets going forward. But there were two ballot measures that did not pass, and so, as a result of that, we do need to have a series of discussions, and that's no different than what we talked about when we established the FY16 budget earlier this year through a series of presentations. So, as I mentioned, the 1% for streets did pass. That has really no direct impact on the general fund. Those funds will be restricted for streets-related projects as outlined in the ballot language. So, question three, which was 0.55% for PSPRS unfunded obligations, did not pass, and that will significantly impact the general fund going forward, starting in January of 2016, and then moving on in each fiscal year thereafter. And finally, question four, which was 0.08% for open space, didn't pass, and that does have a minor impact potentially to the general fund where the maintenance of existing open space is currently funded. So, just a reminder to kind of set the table and reset where we came from through a series of budget discussions, really starting back in 2011 about the challenges faced in general fund. Knowing all of that information, the city council felt that it was its responsibility to put before the voters an option for a dedicated revenue source to pay for the unfunded PSPRS liabilities, which are significant. That amount is $70 million in the current actuarial, and so, the city will need to be preparing, as of now, during this process, to begin paying those increased payments, which are mandated by PSPRS. So, the failure of that 0.55% really means that what the proposal...
Question? PSPRS, you might want to explain to the people watching what that means, and is it demanded by the state, or is it demanded by the board?
The PSPRS is the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. There are 256 member entities in the PSPRS system. The city of Prescott represents two of those entities. We have an individual entity liability for each of our fire and police funds. And so, those funds are established through an actuarial that takes place every year. We expect our new actuarial to come in November of this year. There are a number of different factors that are taken into account in the actuarial to establish the city's rates each year. And each of those 256 entities has a rate established by the actuarial, and each city gets a letter every year that establishes what the rate will be required in order to make the payments that are based on that actuarial in that year. And those payments are required in order to try to keep the fund solvent and better fund it going forward, because right now, each of those entities has its own rating. The city of Prescott has a significant unfunded liability. We are not alone. There are a number of cities and other organizations across the state that have significant unfunded liabilities. Those roll up to about $6.2 billion statewide. Of that, we're about $70 million of it. And that is a liability to the city of Prescott. It is established by prior and current policies set forth by the statewide PSPRS board. They establish certain policies for actuarial rates. They establish certain policies for how they're going to look at smoothing factors and things like that. But even if you change some of those factors, the reality of what you owe going forward is what it is. So...
My question becomes, is the PSPRS board empowered by the state of Arizona?
The PSPRS board is empowered by the state of Arizona for certain things. There are other aspects of the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System that are established both in state statute and also protected by two different clauses in the state constitution. So, as I was saying, without the dedicated revenue source, we're back today to begin a series of discussions, and in order to pay down that PSPRS liability and make the payments that we do and will owe, we will have to make adjustments to other areas of the general fund going forward. The other question that was on the ballot that failed was that 0.08% open space measure, and that was both for the acquisition and also maintenance of open space. Up to 50% of that tax could have been spent on open space maintenance, and that would have relieved some general fund pressure for what we currently spend on maintenance or improved maintenance of open space. With the failure of that tax, we won't see any of that relief, and the open space maintenance will remain in competition in the general fund with all of our other general fund services, including police and fire. So, what does that mean for our tax rate going forward? What it means is that as of January 1st, our tax rate, our local tax rate will remain at 2%. 1% of that going to the general fund, 1% dedicated for streets only and not for the acquisition of open space. And just for a reminder, that is still less than our surrounding communities of Chino Valley and Prescott Valley, neither of which provides fire and ERMS as part of their city services. That is provided separately by the central Yavapai Fire District and Chino Valley Fire District with a separate property tax on their bill. So, a little more about the general fund and the revenue structure that we're constrained by here in Prescott as established locally, and also, most of those constraints are established by state law. I can really sum those constraints up into two words, and those are restricted purposes. So, whenever we talk about the budget, it sounds like a huge number to the general public and probably to the council members that vote on it every year. This year, in fiscal year 16, we have $148 million budget, but the three red columns total about $115 million, and none of those revenues can be used to provide funds to the general fund. All of those revenue sources are restricted, either by ballot measure language, by state statute, or by some other rule that has been established, either in state law or the city of Prescott's charter. So, for example, we have about $67 million in enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are established to operate like a business. We charge fees for those enterprise funds. We establish the rates for those enterprise funds based on state law only for the cost of that service. So, we establish a water rate, a sewer rate, a solid waste service rate. Each of those funds its own specific services, and we can't utilize those funds for police, fire, recreation services, the library, public safety pensions, or the other general governmental purposes in the general fund. So, really, the reason we constantly are talking about the general fund is it is constrained to about $34 million of revenue, and that is where that constant pressure of those increasing pension payments is hitting, and that is the only place that we can make cuts to impact those payments. We cannot utilize the bed tax, which is restricted by state law and local authority, to only be spent for tourism and recreation development. That cannot be used for pensions. That would likely result in litigation that we would lose.
Allison, before you move off that slide, I'd like to clarify something under the Streets and Open Space Fund. The last box at the bottom of that column, the money that's currently coming in under the 2000, the year 2000 voter authorized...
Sure.
...tax is a Streets and Open Space Fund, and that will continue until December 31st.
Right.
And my understanding is that will remain in a discrete fund.
Correct.
And then, after that, the 1% streets tax will start accumulating. So, the bottom box there really is not quite correct. The 1% streets tax is restricted to streets, but the current revenues we have can be used for open space as well.
Yes. I would say the fund balance that exists prior to January 1st, 2016, if the council chose that policy to make purchases of open space with those existing funds, that would be a policy decision for the council. Any of the new revenue going forward, as of January 1st, 2016, is strictly restricted to streets expenditures.
Of the new revenue?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's important, sorry to interrupt your presentation, but I think it's extremely important to let the people know that are listening, as well as on the council, that in its time, in the enterprise funds, there used to be an opportunity to be able to use enterprise funds for police and fire services. In 2013, is it not correct?
I'm not aware that we have ever utilized that for police and fire services. We have always generated utility fees based on studies that specifically relate to the cost of water service, sewer service, and solid waste service. However, we do cost-recover some of our administrative costs for finance, for HR, for the city manager's office, for information technology from those other funds, because we provide support to them. We, you know, all of the financials and the collections happen through finance and the auditing of their books, and you have to have HR services for the enterprise funds as well as for the general fund. So, we do receive some funds for some of the general government services that are often considered overhead in a private business from the enterprise funds, but those are directly related to the services provided by those other departments internally to those funds.
Maybe I misstated it. Enterprise fund. At a time in the state history, up until 2013, Paradise Valley tried to put police and fire on their water bill.
That...
And then, they changed the law to disallow that.
Right. Well, it wasn't specifically allowed. The, I have a slide on this, but the town of Paradise Valley did establish a parcel fee. The way that they assessed that parcel fee was with a bill. I don't know whether or not it was on their water bill, but they would send a bill out to each property owner, which essentially, the state viewed as a tax that they didn't feel should be allowed. And so, in 2013, they made changes to legislation not to allow that to happen moving forward and grandfathering in Paradise Valley.
And actually, just to clarify, I think that was limited to fire service, the fire emergency service of...
It was fire.
So, Prescott Valley, charge...
Paradise Valley.
I'm sorry, Paradise Valley. And by the way, Paradise Valley contracts the city of Phoenix to provide its fire and emergency services. And what they did was they based the fee, they called it, on either the assessed value or the square footage of a parcel of a, because most of Paradise Valley is residential use. So, they based on the size of the parcel or the assessed fee. So, the statute specifically prohibits the city or town from assessing a fire fee or tax, whatever, they tried to call it a fee, based on assessed valuation of property or the square footage of property. So, it's a very, it was a very narrow attempt to raise revenue for their fire service, and it's a very narrow statute that prohibits that narrow attempt.
Well, that's the point I'm trying to make, and I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation, but doggone it, it's important that the state has handcuffed a chartered community from raising funds to recuperate the cost of our police and fire department.
And that's actually a very good segue to the next slide. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's ridiculous.
The state also prohibits the city's ability to increase by any measurable amount the primary property tax. State constitution, as well as the state, the state statute does prohibit the city from increasing the primary property tax more than 2% plus the cost of new construction. That would have been about $35,000 in the $34 million general fund this past year. And so, you can see with our very low property tax amount, it amounts to very little revenue in the real world of providing city services and operating. The city's primary property tax is less than 5% of the general fund, and the majority of your property tax bill is going to other taxing entities. The top three are the Prescott Unified School District, Yavapai College, and Yavapai County. So, as was pointed out, the funding sources that we have available and revenue options we have available as a city are constantly under attack by state law. That was true in the form of the legislature attempting to eliminate residential rental from the tax base last year, which would have been about a $1.5 million impact to the city of Prescott alone. And I fully expect that will probably come back again next year. That is typical of the legislature. They often bring back legislation over and over and over again, whether it passes or not, just to make a point. So, 85% of the general fund revenue comes from city and state assessed taxes. We don't have any correlation to that service level, and you can't charge a fee unless we're creative for our police and fire services. So, the majority of the increases in the general fund and expenditures in recent years are attributable to that pension cost increase for public safety, and it's pressuring other city programs. That's been true for four years. We've made efficiency and cost reductions since the recession started in 2008. We've been establishing user fees where they are allowed by state law, and we've pursued entrepreneurial initiatives and public-private partnerships. For example, the sale of the Elks Theater and the public-private partnership for the operation of the golf courses and the food and beverage out there with Billy Casper Golf. We've implemented asset and maintenance management systems so that we're spending money the best way the first time and not redoing projects over and over and spending more than we need to. We've eliminated programs that were duplications of something that another, either nonprofit or the county, provided, and we've primarily reduced personnel, because that's where a large portion of the expense is. And you can see a detailed list of that in a number of budget presentations under the Budget Fiscal Year 2016 tab on our website. So, what do those position reductions look like? We're about 60 positions less in fiscal year 2016, as we stand today, than where we were in 2008, when we started cutting at the height of the recession. That includes a reduction of five positions in the currently approved FY16 budget, all of which were public safety positions. So, really, we have been reducing, we have been cutting. There's really no fat left to cut. It will be service levels at this point. So, the general fund revenues that go to support the general fund operating services are primarily, as we talked about, sales tax. The local 1% sales tax generates about $13.8 million, and you can see that's pretty much flat from last year. We do live in a competitive region for retail, and as our neighbors grow, their options for retail and the, really, the benefit for a retail operation to locate there increases. So, the money is following where the people are. We have a very small amount coming from primary property tax, and then we are heavily reliant on state shared revenue, which is also constantly under attack by the legislature as they try to balance their budget. There are constant threats of reductions to those state share revenues that represent about 35% of our general fund budget. So, what does that look like this year? Well, we're still down $2.4 million of revenue in the general fund from where we were in 2008, when we started cutting during the recession. So, there's a reason why we're constantly talking about the constraints in the general fund, and it's not just expenses, it's also that our revenue is less than what it was. So, we've had to make the cuts, and the revenue hasn't come roaring back. You can see that property tax value for our residents, for the City of Prescott property tax, down at the bottom, that small blue line, if you look way down at the bottom. That's the small amount that the general fund receives from property tax. And again, that's restricted by state law. The green and red in the middle is the 1% sales tax, and then the state shared revenue that we rely on each year. So, what does that mean for a property tax, a property owner in the city of Prescott? Well, what it means is when you receive your property tax bill, if you live in the city of Prescott and own that property, you're paying about $460 a year less than if you owned that same property outside of the city limits in either Prescott Valley or in the county where the central Yavapai Fire District is located. Similar in Chino Valley Fire District. So, even though you're receiving all of these city services, you're actually paying less for what would be just for fire service if you lived in a fire district. And you can see in this tax bill for $200,000 residents, only about $63 comes to the city of Prescott. For a commercial property, I don't know how likely it is, there's a $200,000 value commercial property, but if there was one out there, they actually pay about $850 less a year in property tax if they're located in the city of Prescott and don't have to pay that fire district tax. So, Prescott Valley and Chino Valley not providing the fire service and EMS service is a significant benefit to their general fund, but they have more, a higher level of property, of sales tax that they're charging despite not having that expense. So, just looking at that on a chart, the city of Prescott in the past and currently, our property tax has been going down per home on average, unless your value skyrocketed significantly, your... significantly, you're paying about $60, $61 on average for a $200,000 home in the city of Prescott, about $524 if you're in central Yavapai Fire District just for your fire service. So that explains some of the constraints. The city's option for generating more revenue is primarily the sales tax, and that's why obviously this council chose to put before the voters an option on the ballot for sales tax ballot measures to fund the general fund. So what is funded by those revenues? As you can see here, when you take out those internal cost recoveries that I was mentioning when Councilman Blair mentioned the value of the different enterprise funds, if you take out the cost recovery that we get, because not every person is paid for the same way in the general fund if we're providing services to those enterprise funds, it's primarily police, regional communications, which is 911, the fire department, and then, to a smaller extent, recreation services and the library. And that's why we constantly talk about those four departments when we're talking about reductions in the general fund, because that's where there's actual money to reduce. And what that looks like on a chart is basically 75% of that general fund dollar amount, about $34 million, is police and fire and the dispatch center to dispatch for them. Then you have the library and recreation services and a small amount for general government development services and economic enterprises. So what that means is reductions out of the general fund from now forward are going to be real, and they can only be achieved with reductions in service. And so the elephant in the room is the pension cost that we've talked about. The dilemma is that we have a $70 million unfunded liability. The PSPRS has established a 22-year timeline to pay that off, and if we pay the actuarial required amount each year going forward for that 22 years, it will cost about $165 million or $40 million more than if we had had that 0.55% dedicated revenue source. We didn't create PSPRS, we're a member. Our employees have been making all of their payments with--that are deducted from each of their paychecks, and the city has been made all of its required payments. Also, each pay period, which we send to PSPRS as required by that actuarial.
Allison, question. One of the things that we learned at the LEAG conference is that if the city pays its PSPRS annual amount as soon as they're given the dollar amount in early in the fiscal year, so they're get ahead of the game, it actually reduces that amount of time and the interest is owed.
Is that your understanding?
It is. You would have that money invested for a longer period of time, and depending on how the investment market was doing, you may win that or lose that. So it's really not any different than any other investment. Over a period of time, the thought is that you would benefit from that, making that payment all upfront rather than spreading it out over 26 pay periods.
Is that a practice that we have implemented?
We have not done that, and in large part, that's because what we owe annually is about $4.5 million.
Okay.
So it's a significant amount. And what we really owe is about $5.4 million if you don't use the phase-in. And so looking at this slide, what you can see is the city is a member of both ASRS and PSPRS. And depending on their statutory eligibility for membership, if you're a non-public safety employee, you'd be a member of ASRS, and if you meet those eligibility requirements. We have about 426 employees enroll in ASRS. And then if you are a public safety eligible employee, then you're enrolled in PSPRS. And that's based on statutory requirements, based on your job responsibilities, et cetera. So what you can see here is that if we had, as a city, decided to take the full actuarial costs, it would have been almost $1 million more in cuts already made this year. The city council opted for the phase-in option, and that was an option provided by PSPRS to spread the impact of that sharp increase in actuarial cost over three fiscal years, the current FY16, 17, and 18, but it does come at a cost. And we will owe that amount by the end of the three years, and it is a cumulative amount that is owed. It is increasing you annually as to how much is owed in to PSPRS. So I think it's important to point out that although what our payment will be this year is a little more than $4.5 million, the actuarial cost is really $5.4 million. So that's why we're having this conversation today. It's about $1.2 million higher, and it goes up every year as we move forward. So if you look at it a little bit differently, the way that the Arizona State retirement system works, we actually saw a small decrease during this fiscal year over the prior year in what both the city and the employee pays. That is a 50/50 cost-sharing program. It is a true statewide pooled pension program. We don't have individual entity liability in that. We have statewide liability. So every entity in the state is paying that 11.47% during FY16, and every employee is paying that percent of their salary. Whereas public safety is a very different system from that with individual entity liability, you can see that the cost of the public safety system is about seven times more than the cost of an ASRS pension cost. And so that's why it's, you know, an important thing to be talking about. So the cost required to pay down the PSPRS unfunded liability will not just require increases in FY16, which we've already incurred about $400,000. It will require continuing increases, not just over the next two years of the phase-in, but over the next 19 years after that is over. So this just shows you what the cumulative cost of the increase from the current year is over the next five years. And remember, this doesn't include the $400,000 we already incurred this year. So what--the basic reason that we're here is because we have actuarial, about $1.2 million that we're going to be needing to cut from the budget, and another surprise coming in November when we get our new actuarial from PSPRS, and that is expected to increase. So budget reductions are how you pay for increased payments to PSPRS from the general fund if you don't have dedicated revenue. As discussed throughout the last year and earlier in the presentation-
Allison, sorry. Just one thing I think that would be helpful is when we talk about the rate and where these dollar amounts come from, you mentioned earlier the percentages for police and fire. There's the employer rate, and then there's all these little fees, and the balance, a majority of that is the unfunded liability percentage.
Correct. If you look at those percentages here, whether it's the actuarial rate or the phase-in rate, which are both very high for the employer, if we didn't have that debt, that $70 million debt, let's just say that went away today, or we wrote a check for $70 million today, the normal cost of the system is actuarially rated to be about 12%. So that would be about 12% and not 63 and 74% of the salary. But we have this unfunded liability, and so in order to get to the dollar amount we have to pay each year, it continues to increase that rate, not because we have more or less employees, et cetera, but we owe a certain amount, and to get to that number, that's how PSPRS establishes the fee.
Yeah, I think it's just important on those that we know what our regular contribution rate and the fees are, but as you just mentioned, a majority of that is because of the unfunded liability.
And that's correct. So as pointed out, the general fund, reducing expense here really does mean reducing services, and this is a slide that we talked about multiple times throughout the last year, about having either fee changes in recreation services, reductions in services there in programming, reductions in library hours, fire service and police services, really time for response, or what we actually respond to in the city of Prescott. And the reality of this is that we will be talking about budget reductions year after year after year in order to pay the known continuing increasing payments to PSPRS to pay off that debt. And so whether the pie chart changes like this or not is the policy question for the city council, but what we know is going to be true is that those police PSPRS and fire PSPRS percentage pieces of the pie are going to continue to grow. And by year 18, not even the end of the increasing payments, it consumes over 30% of the general fund budget if you pay it out over that period of time. So you'll be seeing a lot of me. The budget adjustment considerations that are going to be important because we really need to think strategically about how the service reductions occur, it is important to be thinking about preserving and enhancing revenue. Our primary revenue source for the general fund is sales tax. So we don't want to impact services that would further reduce that sales tax coming in, because then you have to make even more cuts to service. We do get some shared revenue from, for example, the county is one of those sources for the library, from the Yavapai County Free Library Districts, and there's certain things that we have to do in order to maintain that level of funding based on the current formula. So we don't have total control over all of these things, but what we do have control over is foreseeing what some of those impacts might be and making reasonable recommendations for adjustments that don't impact those revenue sources.
Allison, when you talk about fees that we receive, and you show the budget, which is while you're talking about the library, 2.3 million that we're at the library on page 17, is that including the--what, I guess, 2.3, is that what the city spends out of the general fund? Or is that the total budget, including what we receive from the library district?
That's the total budget, including what we receive from the library district.
Thank you.
I think it should be known, though, that when you start talking about receiving attendance from the county, the county's taking $900,000 away from the residents in the library fund and then giving back five because it's a shared library district.
Well, we get about $600,000, but we also receive services from the library network. We have access to databases that we don't pay for. Those are paid directly from the network, which does withhold some of the funds, whether that's right or wrong, or it adds up to exactly $900,000 or not. The way that the free library district works is it distributes a portion of the funds only to municipal libraries, and then it also retains some of the funds in order to provide certain things in a networked environment so that you have access to a larger database. They do provide all the RFID tagging. There are a lot of things that the district provides, and they retain funds for that, whether that's right or wrong. Either the district would pay us the money and we would pay for that or not. There is some level--they are paying for library-related services with what they retain. So we also have mandated services that we have to preserve. We have to provide the financial reports accurately to the state that are required to be filed. We have to complete our audit every year. We have to post agendas and minutes to some degree in order to maintain our compliance with the open meeting law. We have to, you know, file our ACA report for the Affordable Care Act with the federal government and make sure it's accurate so we avoid the penalties that are associated with that. So there are some things that just require some level of people to actually do them, and you have to have a level that actually does them accurately, or you're going to have a problem in the future. Then, of course, reductions to cost-recovered departments are less effective. As we pointed out, we do have cost recovery based on services provided for the overhead-type departments, and in some of those, for example, finance, 26%, only 26% of that department is actually paid for in the general fund. So if you were going to cut accountants in order to save the fire department, you'd have to cut four accountants in order to save the value of one in the general fund. So it's just not as simple as saying, "We don't need this," or "We don't need that." We have to see where the actual expenditure impact is in order to get to that dollar amount that we need in order to make the PSPRS payments going forward. And then other considerations, we do need to stay competitive in the market to some degree. We have well-trained police officers, we have good police response, and we generally have good outcomes with the type of response that we provide in the city of Prescott. And so in order to do that, we have to be able to attract and retain personnel, and we have to maintain our contractual obligations. For example, earlier today, when we approved the grant application, if there are strings attached to that, we have to be able to maintain those, or we look at paying grants back. So I just say all of that to let you know that it's not that simple.
Allison, back up just a minute here. Between page eight and 17, where it's the colorful page-
Right.
--the general fund amount is 33.9 million-
Correct.
And then on 17, it's 31.8.
The 33.9 is the total cost of all of the expenditures, including the cost that is cost recovered, so you have to reduce that amount. And it also includes some of the direct revenue that if we don't have a certain department, we don't get the revenue either. So if you have a department that's $1 million of expenses, but you have $500,000 of like a contract-
That's in this number here.
That's the full-blown number of what it costs. But the way we pay for those, we have some dedicated revenue sources-
You have to spin this.
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's what you could actually cut.
Okay.
So, which points out those internal cost recoveries, and also we have direct revenue for some things. For example, if you can't provide fire support to the tribe, they pay us about $300,000 a year for fire support, so that revenue goes away if you can't provide the support. So then, the longer-term operational discussions, because this is going to be going on and on and on, the pension doesn't go away, neither do the payments or the increases. As we talked about during mid-year adjustments, this won't be the end of the discussion of the necessary cutbacks in services. As the pension costs continue to increase and service levels decline due to the cuts required to pay for those expenses, changing service models are things that we will of necessity have to talk about. Some of those examples are regionalization of library services, some new models of response for public safety, and perhaps there will be some way to do a parcel fee or charges for public safety services, and I'm sure John Palladini is up at night thinking about that.
The bottom line is we have to challenge the people for this. This is our community, so we're going to take the wheels off of it in one meeting like we're doing right now. It doesn't please me very much, quite sure it doesn't please very many people. But when you say longer term, I have not heard discussion about properties we own in the city of Prescott. And just specifically pick one, and I know they're associated with different values and different departments that they have to be paid back to, but when we have a fire station number seven on Sixth Street that's sitting there, it's a valuable piece of property if it was purchased with fire department funds, we need to look at liquidating those stations and look at putting those monies back in to pay off PSPRS. There is no reason to have excess lands or buildings within our system, and I haven't seen an evaluation on any of those yet.
Well, and all of those things are factors that we are going to be talking about. It's just a matter of timeliness of being able to make reductions now, but we also know that we will continue to have to make those in the future. So we do have time to look at those things, and the reality is, though, that in order to make the reductions now and have those be ongoing reductions, because if you get value for a piece of property today, you can't use that over--you can only use that once.
Well, no, and I understand. And the first one you put up here, and I'm not against the library whatsoever, but doggone it, when we start thinking about it, when you look at page 15, that it costs on $200,000, $30 a year for the library district, we have to get serious about making it Yavapai's library district and fund the whole thing through property tax and save that $2.3 million in our general fund to pay for our police and our firefighters. And it doesn't need to be next year, next month, it should be right now, because we know this cost is going to go on.
Well, and you make a good point, but I will also point out that each of these things has a number of challenges, and those are--can be legislative challenges. They are challenges that the city of Prescott does not set some of those rates or some of those formulas. Other governing bodies do, and state statute establishes when they can make changes to those rates and assessments. And also, there are funding issues and structural limitations to how these things might be achieved or whether they are achievable. So it's just not that simple that we can click the button and make these things happen. They do have significant structural changes that have to take place, and it is wise for us to be looking at the real impacts of those, whether those are legal, whether those are legislative challenges, or whether those are, you know, just because you join with another fire district doesn't mean you have any more money to pay for that bill that's going to be coming to you as a city. So there are a number of challenges that the city faces with all of these, but they are things that we will have to look at of necessity as we move forward because we know that those bills are going to be going up from PSPRS. And so I say all of those things to prepare the council and the public for the process that's outlined here, which may change slightly for implementing the budget reductions in the current fiscal year, because we do need to start now. We have a huge increase coming in July of 2017, and the reality of the way that cities provide services is you can't just cut on July 1st and get all of that value. We have contracts that come up throughout the year at different times. We have payouts, we have employees that have certain expectations, and so what we've laid out here is today being the first presentation of the background and approach for moving forward based on the failure of those tax measures. And then the next time that we would be talking about this is on October 6th, where the department heads would bring forward their detailed recommendations about reductions in expenditures and what that means for service levels. There are some options for revenue enhancement- There are some options for revenue enhancements, but those are fairly limited in the scope of the dollar amount we're looking at for PSPRS. And then, of course, we will get the letter we get every year from the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System updating our actuarial costs that will apply for fiscal year 17. We fully expect those to increase. They are making some changes to their actuarial, and it will have a negative impact on the city of Prescott. So, that will happen, and it will be coming in November. Also, during November, we would anticipate further discussion of what is brought forward in October for a number of meetings, and then hopefully, a decision that will allow those cuts to begin on January 1st of 2016. In January, we will also be beginning the fiscal year 17 process, as we always do. The process to establish the budget for a city of this size takes time. In order to establish those priorities, get the numbers in line, and bring forward presentations to the city council for policy decisions. At the same time, we do have the employee classification and compensation and pay plans that need to be addressed, and that will provide time to do that in preparation for the 17 budget, which will actually be approved on June 2017, not June 2016. Sorry about that on that slide. But during that time, in January, the legislature will also come into session, and I would fully expect them to be considering changes to the PSPRS system going forward. As we've discussed multiple times, we have the current debt, and we also need to be advocating to assure that a debt similar to that does not accrue again in the future by making changes to the PSPRS system for new employees going forward in a way that can't be litigated and lost, which was a huge part of our actuarial cost increase this last year. So, with that, I would turn it over for any further questions.
I'll go a little bit mayor on this. I'll kick it off. One thing, why I thought sales tax would have been a better idea than property tax for getting a hold on this, is that other people help pay for that. You know, we talk about the tourist dollars, but there's no stores in the Mountain Club, Groom Creek, Williamson Valley, Ponderosa Park. But are we subsidizing the quality of life for the residents that live there? Yeah, we are. They don't have parks and rec. They don't have a library. They don't have an airport. So, by doing it with sales tax, when they shop here, they put into the pot, and they help pay for that, too. I hate seeing this road that we're going down. I think about, you know, if APS decided to raise the electric rates, and I decided to send them a message that I didn't like that by not paying my bill, you know, in a few years, if enough people did it, maybe they'd get that message. But in the meantime, I'm sitting in the dark, and I hope we come up with some good solutions, because I think Prescott is sitting in the dark a little bit for the next couple of years until this whole mess gets straightened out. And not only are we not, we having to cut our budget and reduce it, and reduce what we're doing, and not all that may be a bad thing. Maybe through this process, we'll find a lot of nooks and crannies that we didn't know about. You know, it seems like most of that fat is gone. It's people that we're going to have to start cutting right now. But it's going to be a rough road, and I take my hats off to all the people that ran for council and mayor that are going to tackle this in the future.
Mayor, thanks. And Allison, I know that this is not a fun topic. There's not joy in putting together these presentations and having these conversations. But, you know, recently, there's been some discussion of, well, if the budget's balanced for this year, why do we need to start acting now? Why not just wait till the next budget cycle? And I think clearly, from your presentation today, one of my takeaways is that we know it's coming, and the sooner we start addressing it and dealing with it, the better off we're going to be longer term. And certainly, this, these next 60 days are not going to be anything enjoyable, but we need to have the conversation, make the decisions, and start trucking down the road for the benefit of the city, so that we can get this thing under control as best as possible.
I want to go back to the police officer, and I don't want to refer to one of our police officers like a football. But the idea of leveraging some of the grants that we have, the opportunities to preserve some of the expertise we have on our force is very strategically smart. And I do appreciate the opportunity to have that come forward rather than, especially since it doesn't have any attachments. And the more opportunity we have, remember, I'm a federal taxpayer, too. I'm also a state taxpayer, and the more opportunity I have to get some of the federal dollars and some of the state dollars back in use right here in River City, I appreciate that without a lot of the strings that seem to come across with that. So, I think the opportunities that we have, because I would rather do anything we can to try and keep the knowledge and the expertise of those people that the citizens of Prescott have paid to train than to see them walk out the door for a higher rate of pay somewhere else, because we're non-competitive. So, just bring that up with you, to keep that on your mind.
Absolutely.
I'd really like to see us focus more on where we can increase revenues instead of just cut, cut, cut. We're probably going to have to do both. But I'd like to see more focus on how we can raise revenues. And I see in page 12, when you talk about general fund revenues, you've got categories of licenses and permits, service charges, fines and forfeitures. I think those are areas that we ought to take a closer look at. Can we increase fines for certain violations? Can we increase the cost of a permit? How much would that raise? And over time, you know, maybe we don't implement all of those in one year, but over time, can we help offset some of the damage that's being done by this huge mounting debt?
Absolutely, and I fully expect that you'll see some of those on October 6th. The rub is always that we don't generally keep the entire amount of the fee or the fine. Oftentimes, some of that, or a significant portion of that, goes to the state.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilwoman Will Cox in the fact that we do need to concentrate on revenue, except I'm not for penalizing and citing our citizens of Prescott to do it. We need to support programs that Joe does to bring in tourism and to increase our tax base revenue. Having said that, I'd just like to make a statement that this office that I hold is for the public safety, the safety of the citizens of Prescott. And going forward, unless either chief can convince me that their cost-saving measures will not reduce the safe, or, you know, if it reduces the safety of our public, I can't support any cuts from those two departments.
Mayor? Yes? But you know what? It is, it is response time. And I mean, we got sent a message, and no matter how much we want to, you know, when you, the funding is directly related to how fast they get to your house. When you clutch your chest, are you happy with the fire department showing up in six minutes or 10 minutes? Do you want that cop at your door in three minutes or five minutes? And, you know, we kind of made a decision. We just got the police back up to the staffing level that was less than uncomfortable. Should we say it that way? They're up to minimum. And now, we're going to have to look at cutting some of that stuff back. But that is the biggest share. So, where's it going to come from? We can't make money.
I've shared many a times my values on the whole thing, you know? I'm not for closing the library down, but there's a different funding source, and I have a meeting with the supervisors, and to make that change as soon as we possibly could make that change saves the general fund $2.3 million. I've talked about several times, "Library, here it comes, here it comes, here it comes." Everybody laughs at you, saying, "No, no, I don't need to pay." You know, back in the day when the library district was created, it was meant to be a free library. There's nothing free out there. And we're in a position right now where we have to look at every single one of those things. And to preserve the library by going through county and having it put on your tax bill at $60 a year per residence on a $400,000 house, let's fund that through the property tax and leave some of that money in our general fund to pick up the slack. And we keep wanting to ignore it for the people that can't afford it. I'm going to tell you what, when somebody starts having a heart attack or a fire in their house, if they can't afford the response from our police and fire department, we're all done and ended.
We'll go to the public in just a minute. Elizabeth, let me.
Elizabeth Raffner, 214 Park Avenue. As founder of the Friends of the Library and racer of money ever, ever since, all these years, what would be the effect if we, the public, raised enough money to make up the budgetary difference projected to you? Could we directly give it to the city budget, so they would go to the shortfall for the library of about $50,000-plus this year? Can we designate private funds to support the city budget?
The library already has a significant amount of support directly from the Friends of the Library for programming, et cetera. The shortfall depends on how much of the $1.2 million shortfall would come from a policy decision from the council to come from the library versus other areas. So, any amount could be dedicated to the library. It's just a matter that the $2.3 million is an ongoing annual cost to operate the library. That's the total cost.
My question is, if the shortfall were funded by private funds, could we be assured that they would directly go to and decrease the shortfall?
Yes.
That's why we formed the Friends in the first place, to keep the funds these people gave the library out of the general fund. Now, what if we want to put it back in? Can it go directly to decrease that shortfall?
It could. However, it depends on the person's definition of the shortfall and whether the shortfall is the difference between the $600,000 of direct funding from the district and the $2.3 million budget, or some other shortfall. So, I don't know that the magnitude of the shortfall would ever be achieved on an annual basis.
We will discuss it, if we may, with your permission. I would like to bring that up to the Friends and to the Library Advisory Board and see if we can make a difference, as we have all along. Thank you.
Mayor, just one question.
Okay.
Today, we're not discussing any specific proposal. This is a topic of discussion about where we've been, where we are, and specific proposals are coming on the 6th from department heads.
That is correct.
I was going to go to that next, but thank you.
Sorry for jumping ahead.
This council, this is really nothing new. We have, we have known this was, the train was on the track for, well, I've been here six years, and I think the second or third year, we started realizing, as we would get our letters from the PSPRS every year telling us how much we had to put in. I have been offended by some of the folks out there, I don't know whether city residents or county residents, have made accusations that we had not been paying our bills on time to PSPRS, and that's why the shortfall is in place. And that's not true.
It is absolutely not true.
The, and again, this council, we said that we was going to take this to our citizens, which we did. And our citizens told us, "No, we want to play with this a while and see if the legislature can do something." And we've been working with our legislature for three years. In fact, there's been a change in the legislature while we've been talking about this thing. So, the public told us, they do not want to get ahead of the game and start paying down our debt, that they want the legislature to see if the state has money that could help us. And those of us that have been involved with our legislators, and particularly at the League of Cities and Towns a couple, three weeks ago, there was a lot of legislative people there. And burst, the best-case scenario was this will have to go to the voters, the state voters, for a constitutional amendment, and the earliest that could happen would be 2017 and maybe two years later than that. So, we're kidding ourselves. So, what, what you're doing is exactly what we've told you to do, is bring back some alternatives for us to look at. And Charlie, to just build on what you said, on October 6th, there'll be a presentation to this council in public session by each general fund department head to tell us how they can reduce expenditures and maybe increase revenue possibilities. So, that's the next time we'll be talking about this. It's, it's as real as anything can be, and I would hope by the time we leave the, our domicile here on November 24th, that this council has, has taken the initiative and put something in place that will make it easier for the next council to approach this from some semblance of, of just common sense and admit that we have, we owe some money, and we're going to have to do something about it. I don't know whether there will be any desire to go back to the public or not. It seems like it's always easier to be against something than it is to recognize what it really is and try to move forward with it. So, enough said from me, but we'll continue to work on this through November 24th and see where we go with it. But the bloodletting will start, and it'll have to start after the 1st of the year and continue until a council and a public is willing to quit ignoring it and do something about it. So, it's been a great journey, and it's terrible to force to leave in these conditions. But we'll make some decisions before this council, before we end our term. So, Jean, you're still wanting to say something?
Well, yes, thank you. I had one thought I wanted to express, and that is, when we went to the league and sat in that presentation, which was pretty much what we heard presented here to this council, the interesting thing to me was the reaction of the audience to the PowerPoint. Prescott was right up there on the screen as an example of one of the hardest-hit communities with the PSPRS debt. And there are a lot of reasons for that, but one of those goes back to the fact that I think Prescott shot itself in the foot a long time ago by trying to keep tax rates so low. And then, we got stuck with the constitutional amendment that capped our ability to increase property taxes. That didn't happen in other communities, so many other communities in Arizona. So, they're not in as bad a condition as we are, relatively speaking, per capita. But something to keep in mind, you know, paying our share as a taxpayer is important to keeping the community alive and growing and sustaining what you have and giving it a future. And I, I'm sorry that it happened in the past, and now, our generation has to deal with it.
Any comments from the public? Yes, come on up.
Richard Steele, man. It's a quiet drive, Prescott. I'd like to thank Craig McConnell and Allison Zomes. Their presentations, their hard work is second to none. They're amazing. Just one quick comment, and that is, this is going to get really involved. The last thing we want to do is start pointing fingers, arguing, fighting, and carrying on with each other. It's so easy to do. And there are people in government that would love to see that happen. They take advantage of this. Don't let it happen. We're smart people, got a great community. We're going to figure this out. We're going to get through it. I don't hear anybody saying, you know, "Let me volunteer, or maybe I can cut this, or maybe I can cut that." I would like to hear that. Every manager here in the city knows where they can do something. That's just how it is. When I was working, retired now, I had a corporate directive every year, $1 million out of my budget. Didn't ask me, didn't care where I did it or how I got it. But that was how we did business. That was at Ford Motor Company. They went bankrupt. I think it was the late 80s, early 90s. They said 40% of the people home, gave them a big check, here's $100,000. Thank you for your service. See ya. That's how it ended up anyway. When you have three or four people, employees, that retire- Anyway, when you have three or four people, employees, that retire and only one working on the payroll, inevitably, you're going to be in the same spot.
Yeah.
It's unsustainable. You can't have three people retired, one working, and cover all that expense. The 20 and out, that's going to be key in solving this problem. I worked for a company at 30 and out. We had to have 30 and out. That came from the foundry people. If you've ever been in a gray iron foundry, you didn't live long enough after 30 years to retire, you were dead. You can't breathe in a foundry. You don't shut it off and go home. So they gave them 30 and out. That was the canary in the coal mine. Eventually, more people got on board that. 20 and out, they might deserve it, I don't know. I sure wouldn't want their jobs. But it's unsustainable, unfundable, and this is the proof.
Yeah.
It just doesn't work. So what I'm asking is, is there's going to be moments, we're going to get mad, we're all going to want to prove our point, or make a point, or "I've got the answer, you just have to go along with me." No. Let's do it together, let's stay friends, let's all go in one direction. We're going to get through this. Thank you.
I agree with you. After 51 years, I've saw a lot of the good, bad, and the ugly.
Yeah.
And that's exactly why I said, this council will continue to move forward, we recognize we've got a problem, and we're going to work toward a solution as long as we're here. And I guarantee you that we'll leave things in better shape than, than they look right now, I think.
That's true, Mayor. And you know what? I hate to say this, I'm a veteran. They're forced retiring our military guys right now in droves. Our officers and everything, we're getting slaughtered. They're being pulled out of every place and sent home, "We don't need you, we can't afford you." This just isn't in the private sector, public sector, it's our military, it's across the board. And it's sad.
Yeah.
We're losing a lot of great people, but these two people right here, they're awesome.
The quality of life of Prescott will continue, I promise that.
I bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I think you got one, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Surprised, surprised.
Where you been?
I came in late.
Okay.
So anyway, my name's Daniel Mattson, I live on Merritt Street. You know, I seem to remember in, I think it was 2013, I suggested hanging on to a bit of the secondary property tax for just such a purpose, but nonetheless, it was like a non-starter. So now we're here where we are, and I thought I might suggest that there's a lot of people in this town who voted for the tax and would have been willing to pay the tax. We say it would have been about $126 a year per, well, maybe some of us might be willing to get together and form friends with the city of Prescott and maybe throw five or 10 bucks into a giddy every month. I wouldn't say that that's a non-starter, I'd be willing to do it. And maybe we should just float to the citizens of Prescott, those who care about this might be willing to volunteer to help. Five or 10 bucks apiece, you know, that might, might kill a couple hundred bucks, $100,000 a year or something. It might, might save a position or two. I'm willing to do it.
Appreciate your, your thoughts.
Mayor, if I may, just one other thought.
Sure.
I just want to point out, one correction to my answer to Councilman Lozelle's question about the difference between the 34 and the 31 million. The primary difference there is the capital expenditures. So 31 is the ongoing operating cost of the, of the general fund. I just want to correct myself there. Thank you to the wonderful Mark Woodfill for correcting me. And then also, all of this information about the upcoming budget discussions for the mid-year adjustments is available on the city's website at www.prescott-az.gov. And if you go to the right-hand side, it is under the fiscal year 2016 budget button, so.
Did you send this presentation to the governor, by chance?
I do not have a direct line to the governor as yet.
Mayor, I think you had one more member of the public that was making their way through.
Yes, come on down.
We voted for it.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Ralph S. Prescott. As I've attended several of these presentations, I've had an increasing level of frustration when I continually hear the complaints about the impact that state actions are having on local governance, and then not hearing any type of response to the, those laments to challenge it. I'm encouraged by your comment right there at the end, Mr. Mayor, that the League of Cities and Towns, Arizona Cities and Towns apparently is going to be looking to address positively what we've seen today is grossly inadequate property taxes available to address these costs that we have. And I would encourage you that despite whatever reservations they have or concerns that the state players have with regard to seeking a constitutional amendment and to make the statutory modifications that are necessary to enable local governments to have a variety and flexibility with regard to revenue sources, to push that. Because as I sit here and listen to these laments, I share them, and I get frustrated when I don't see any, any response to that, to challenge it. You know that there is a state preemption that preempts the city from charging or seeking an income tax. But the state keeps reducing shared revenues, they keep reducing the percentage, or the HERF funds that are available to us. So we keep taking it from the state, and there's no pushback. And if you've got a League of Cities and Towns, who, Arizona Cities and Towns, that are also feeling this brunt, even if it's not to the extent that Prescott's feeling it, people might be responsive to property tax where they weren't responsive to a sales tax, if they can see a direct relationship between public safety services and property taxes. I was encouraged also by what you were saying, Councilman Blair, except for the fact, except for the comment about divesting ourselves of public assets. Because once you divest ourselves of the public, public assets, we get, we got a one-shot deal at that. And that's not going to, that's not going to solve the long-term problems, which we've seen today. So I encourage you to look and really push to have, this is a charter city. We all, we should be able to take control over the means by which we cover our expenses and not be continually subject to overreach by the state, where the state really has no interest, that I can see, in limiting our revenue flexibilities. And I understand, nobody likes income tax, nobody likes any taxes, but those user fees, if you keep trying to look at user fees, you're going to reduce the number of people who are going to be able to have access to the services, and it's going to be, again, a short-term response.
Yeah. Let me, let me just share one thing with you. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns is 91, made up of 91 municipalities. The membership of the PSPRS is made up of 256 entities. There's a tremendous lobbying effort already started to, don't pay any attention to the recommendation of the League of Cities and Towns. And a lot of money has already been thrown out there, and a lot more to come, that it's not in some folks' best interests for this problem to be solved. And I hate, I hate to tell you that, but it's a fact. And we just, we just went through that at the league, that there's a lot of work to be done. And we just hope that everybody will come together and recognize, if we don't fix it in some form or another, it'll be ongoing, and municipalities will experience in Arizona what municipalities have done in some of the other states, and it's not good.
Well, and, and I'm not all that, I guess, optimistic, or, I guess, I like to have a positive attitude, but I don't, I wouldn't look to state legislatures, legislators to say, "Yeah, we're going to help you on this." But you've got 40,000 residents of the city of Prescott, and I don't know how many residents of other municipalities that are feeling the same problem. And if, even if the League of Arizona Cities and Towns doesn't have the lobbying clout or leverage that these other folks do, they sure have the ability to draft an initiative and go out and seek to have the electors and the voters sign initiative petition to get the issue on the ballot, regardless of whether the legislators want to, want to have it done, or any of the lobbyists want to have it done. And if there's, and, and they have, you, you have the ability and the expertise to be able to draft initiatives and then have, and go out and have the citizens sign them and get it on the, on the ballot.
Well, I think-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't rely on lobbyists and legislators.
Yeah. I, I think our, we are led to believe that, that, at least our people in the legislature, this is going to be a front-burner project. And let's see where we, how we get off the ground and where we go with it. But it's not an immediate fix. It's probably three or four years away.
No, I understand that, but-
By the time you get there, yeah.
I understand that from what's been said today, but I would really encourage that type of movement, because I think that's going to be long-term, and that involves everybody. That involves the citizens, that involves the state citizens. And you have the ability to do it.
Yeah.
Even with, over the desires of the legislators and the lobbyists.
Well, you've had some experience with that, I've known you for a long time, so I may be asking you for help.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Hey Ralph, I just wanted to mention too, Mayor, if I could, on this, I got to take my hat off to Karen Fan and Noel Campbell. At the conference, they were there as well, and I think they were there for most of the days, and they were very accessible for us. It's strange, sometimes it seems like more happens in the hallways than does in the little classrooms that you go into for these, these meetings. But she was very open to us, we bent her ear for hours. Noel Campbell, the same way. I think Noel has shown great strides in taking one of Prescott's issues and running with it. So I think we just have to keep cultivating those relationships moving forward, and they've, they've shown themselves to be accessible to us. Now, where that goes in the future, I'm not sure, but it was, it was encouraging down at the conference that we talked about, when we were passing resolutions about PSPRS and about group homes, to see that kind of support. So I just hope that gets better.
No, I, I think-
We're not ignored.
No, well, that's great. And that would be a great option, or one, one avenue of, of approach. My suggestion is that not be the only approach, because I think, I think a more effective approach is going to be 40,000 people.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else? We're adjourned.